Hi, everybody. All right. By my watch, exactly six o'clock. I'd like to call the Sunapee School District Board Meeting, Wednesday, October 2nd, 2019. Calls to order in the middle high school music room. Let's go with the call to order to start. We're gonna start on the far side over here.
Kelly Wussels, Business Administrator.
Russell, Superintendent.
Jesse Tyler, School Board.
Scott Richman, School Board.
Andy Nichols, School Board.
Carrie McCollough, School Board.
Lizzie Nichols, Student Representative.
Amy Lee, Assistant Principal, Sunapee Public Schools.
Jody Bergen, Principal, Sunapee Central Elementary Schools.
Great. And so, slightly out of order, I should've said this before I had Liz do the role call, but the last four or five years, we've had a student rep on the board. And to our delight, Lizzie has stepped forward to be the rep for the remainder of the school year. So, we welcome her tonight. We're looking forward to having student voice and insights. Thank you very much, Lizzie Nichols. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, Canada, Republic, and British Union, one nation, under God, in the ideal, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. We have the, looking to get approval of the school board meeting minutes from September 4th, 2019. Probably should do them separately, two distinct meetings. So, I do have a motion to approve the September 4th school board meeting minutes as written.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 4th, 2019 school board meeting minutes.
I'll second it. Thank you, Scott. Andy? All right. Seconded for discussion. Any questions, comments, or corrections? We're lucky to have very good quality notes done. All right. Thank you. So, all in favor of approving the September 4th school board meeting notes, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Next up is the capital improvements subcommittee meeting notes from Wednesday, September 25th. They're at the 6:00 PM at the Central Elementary School. I have a motion to approve the minutes as written.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the September 25th CIP meeting.
Thank you, Andy. Have a second? I'll second it, 'cause I was there. Sorry, it just takes a second. Bear with, bear with. So, seconded for discussion. Anything you wanna add from it, Andy?
No.
No, I think it's good. We can talk about the contents of the notes when we get to information. So, let's save it for then. So, all in favor of the accepting the minutes of the September 25th, 2019 CIP meeting? Please say aye.
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 All right. Agenda review. So, we already, we added Lizzie Nichols to the beginning. I didn't have any set changes. I think it's a pretty straightforward agenda. Okay? Good down the row. Public forum, in accordance with policy, B-E-D-H. With our entire audience of two taxpayers that took time tonight to come, would either or both of you like to make a comment? Okay. Thank you for attending, both of you. School updates. You ready to go? You're, you got the hot mic. You go.
So, the school year has picked off very, very busy, but very positive. So busy that we have eighty percent of our students involved in some sort of co-curricular activity. So, we have a lot of clubs going on at our school right now, some new this year. One we have going on is the bee club. And this season so far, they've harvested five hundred, six hundred pounds of honey that was now sold at the chowder challenge and is being sold to the staff. And the cool thing about that is that all of their funds go towards building their clubs. So, now they're one hundred percent self-sufficient. We also have a chess club, a bike club, service club, GSA club, a new student-led Republican club, an art club which turned into a pottery-based club this year, a vex robotics club which met for their first two-hour-long meeting this week. And next meeting, they're gonna start brainstorming new ideas that they can take on this season. And the outdoor club just hiked the Franconia Ridge last week, which was almost a ten-mile hike. Another thing that takes up a lot of the students' time at school is sports. And all of our sports teams have found great success this year. Soccer, both boys and girls varsity and junior varsity teams have been very successful. It's been a very busy week for them. They've had four, they have four games this week. Their next games are tomorrow, home versus New Market. We had two students score one hundred points this week, which was very exciting for them, the teams, and the community. Volleyball has had a very steady season. In fact, they're playing a home game right now against Stevens. Golf has been winning pretty consistently. They have eight players this year from high school and one from middle school. Bass fishing just came in fifth in the state championship. And they have another event soon on the Connecticut River. There are also a lot of miscellaneous activities at our school that take up students' time, such as drama, music, and art. There's a new play this year. It's Elf Jr., and it's gonna be a musical. And they just held auditions, so everyone now has their roles. And they've just started rehearsals this month. We have a new running start class at the school this year, college composition, which means that our teacher, Mr. Coverdale, was approved to be a college professor at our school. We've also had a couple of college fairs that the students have been able to attend. One was last week at SNU. And we also held a mini-college fair in our gym. We have some students taking classes at Dartmouth this year through the Special Community Students Program. So, that's an off-campus program where they can go up during the day and take classes there. College applications are due soon. So, that's not just a busy time for the seniors at the school, but also the teachers who are being asked rapidly to write letters of recommendations for their kids. We have senior projects. Some of us are done with them, and some are just getting them approved, but everyone is well on their way with those. We have new class officers this year, which means that class fundraisers are starting, and everyone's very excited about those. We also have NHS, National Honor Society, applications that are due this week for juniors and seniors to qualify for that. And this year, some other things that I wanted to share. We have multiple, multiple new students this year, which is amazing to see new faces in the hallways. So, I reached out to some of those students this morning, coming from towns nearby, coming from Florida, Arizona. And I just asked them how they felt about the school. And one of them said they feel very, very welcome, and that everyone is very friendly here. And another, coming all the way from Florida, said that the first thing she noticed when she came was that she absolutely loves the sense of community that this school has and is excited to finish her year here. We have some new classes, as well as new teachers this year. So, two of those are Small Town, New Hampshire, and another class called Theater and Drama. We have a new French and English teacher. We have new cafeteria management. And in addition to that, the community steam class is just taking on, they're making carnival games for the Halloween in the Harbor event, which is coming up within the next couple of weeks. So, we have a lot of new things going on. This week is very busy because it's homecoming week, as well as academics and co-curriculars have kind of taken full swing on our students. So, everyone is a little bit stressed, but still staying positive because it's homecoming week. So, upcoming, we have Spirit Week, the Bonfire, and a dance this weekend. So, school pride is definitely a big theme this week at our school.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Lot going on. It's good to hear student voice since the year is officially, definitely, the honeymoon is over and the year is underway. Principal Bergen, could you give us an update on SES, please?
We did, Lizzie mentioned the chowder challenge. So, the SPTO has held the nineteen annual chowder challenge in the Harbor. A couple of weeks ago, we, it was very well attended. We don't have final numbers. We'll get those next week from, at the PTO meeting, but it was very well attended. It was gorgeous day. We have tomorrow night coming up, we have the cardboard challenge in the Sherburne Gym, which is a lot of fun. If you haven't, if you haven't been to it, stop by. It's, it's interesting, the kinds of big gadgets and games and things that the kids come up with. We also have a ski jumping presentation tomorrow, trying to get kids interested in ski jumping and build up a feeder for the baseball team. And we also, on Friday, we have Fluth State's Tiger Theater Group coming to present to the whole school on kindness. And then they'll do individual workshops with each grade of all.
Nice.
But a busy few days.
That's great. Yeah, the chowder challenges here, I've only been in town for four of them, but there was a lot of people there.
There were.
It was really well done, with like vendors and families. It was really cool. Supa? Your update, please.
All right. So, as Lizzie indicated, there is a lot going on. Thanks, Lizzie. In addition to everything that she mentioned, we've also just completed a successful trip to nature's classroom with our sixth graders. So, we're very appreciative of Mrs. Parsons, Mrs. Lobster, and Mr. Meek for making that happen yet again. In addition to the college fairs, we've also had students attend the New Hampshire Construction Career Day, put on, giving students interested in the trades a lot of opportunity to connect with people and to use heavy equipment out on, you know, mock job sites and explore a lot of avenues for career paths in trades. Leah Savage, a civil engineer with the Department of Transportation, has come in to speak to our introduction to engineering class. We have a book club in addition to the book clubs that Lizzie mentioned. And this weekend, the book club went to see the Sarah Jessica Hale-winning author, who's a national bestseller, Jodi Kito, who lives in Hannover, New Hampshire.
That's great.
So, went and saw her speak. We took a class today to Northern Stage to see Adol's, Adol's House, Part Two. That was our drama and theater class, one of our new offerings. And then teachers have been working in collaborative teams. We've set aside some time that we're carving out to increase collaboration. And so, we have about twelve different permutations of teacher groups that are meeting to collaborate on different topics. So, sometimes it's just the, for example, Tuesday was a grade seven, teachers got together to look at grade seven holistically and that experience for kids and looking at what we could collaborate across that grade level. And then in another time slot, the science teachers met. So, we're seeing vertical and horizontal ways to collaborate and integrate. And have a number of those different meetings happening, some during the day, some happening after school, trying to include increased collaboration with our teachers.
Excellent. Great. Thank you for the update. Superintendent update. Did you guys have any questions or comments? I mean, keep the train rolling too quickly. Okay. Thanks. Superintendent, please.
One of the big pieces we were paying attention to this week was the state budget that was approved. Putting aside a hundred thirty-eight million dollars to continue educational funding throughout the biennium, increasing adequacy aid, enhancing pre-imbued lunch, creating sixty-two million dollars in disparity aid, restoring stabilization grants to one percent at the 2012 level, and adding kindergarten to the adequacy formula. That is some great news to a lot of our smaller cities and towns in our state. Unfortunately for us, we're not a benefactor of any of that hundred thirty-eight million. With the proposed budget, we were slated for about forty-four thousand dollars, majority of that coming in, some of the stabilization money in the kindergarten. Well, kindergarten now goes to adequacy and out of keno garden, we lose some revenue in that, in that regard. So, good news, I think, for a lot of folks across the state. Great news that we have a budget for moving forward. Unfortunately, we don't gain a whole lot from that budget, but we kind of do that going forward. Had the opportunity Monday night. Andy was there as well. We got to go listen to the U.S. Deputy Secretary of Education. Nick did, had a really interesting presentation. There were some things that were, were kind of right up in your face, but I think it's good to hear some of those things and looking at this, looking, his conversation is coming from a national look and not necessarily a New Hampshire look. And so, when you look at public education from a national level, it's not as, it's not as shiny as it is when it's here in New Hampshire, when you look at it from a New Hampshire level. But with that, I would say probably twenty, thirty percent of the things that he said, I can, I can solidly support. And he really spoke highly about the student, specifically the college loan process and that process. And it's really becoming a, again, sort of a housing project and we're giving out lots and lots of money on how we're gonna prove that and what's gonna happen when that falls. But then more importantly, really giving principals, superintendents, and teachers more creative and innovative, the freedom and ability to go do that and pull out local, state, and federal sort of constraints and regulations around them. So, it was, it was an interesting conversation. It was probably even about fifty people there. I'm sure Andy may want to add a little bit on that. And then my last piece, the, the crisis that we're all hearing about regarding vaping, you know, I wanted to take this on originally by talking about our athletic policy, but I guess at this point, it's really become much more of a, a national crisis. So, in, I said, on September 17th, there were five hundred and thirty cases of some sort of cardiovascular issues from, that have happened in thirty-three of our states. And September 30th, there were eight hundred and five that hit forty-six states. So, this vaping has become an epidemic. We have recognized from our risk behavior survey that our statistics went from thirty-two percent of our kids to forty-two percent of our kids. And we get our data back. I certainly hope that that has stabilized, if not decreased. I don't know if that's the case, unfortunately. We are in the process, as you know, last year, we brought a speaker in, had a great assembly for kids, and then also had a great night for parents. We are working with the police chief to try to help, work with local people who are selling these products and making sure their ID, are giving IDs. You know, Massachusetts has put a ban on them. When, when people are talking about going back to smoke cigarettes to get off of vaping, that's very concerning. That's a very big national epidemic. And so, one of the pieces that I was able to speak with Tom and Sean Tom Tredak, Athletic Director, regarding our athletics and our violation policy. And you know, last year, when we took a look at that policy handbook, excuse me, we made some provisions so that in your first offense, if you, if you had done something wrong, there's a consequence. But depending on when that second offense was, we didn't have to go right to a second offense. We had some flexibility. So, we gave our athletic director some flexibility. And I say that because if we're truly dealing with this epidemic and kids are that addicted to vaping and the nicotine and other things that are in them, we need to be cognizant of how we can help our kids get themselves off this potential very addictive, very harmful product or habit, I guess, at this point. So, we are, we'll continue to look at that, but I just think we need to continue to remind our own children. We need to continue to ask teachers to remind our kids, ask parents to remind our kids that whatever's going on with, with vaping and the products and what's going in there, we need to slow down to look at that. And if there is somebody in our school that is having an issue and feeling like they can't step away or can't stop doing that, please reach out to administrator or guidance council so we can help you try to get some supports in place. Because we certainly don't want to be the forty-seventh state, or the forty-eighth state, or the school district that had, you know, X, Y, Z happened unfortunately because of child vaping.
Yeah, it's, it's an odd part missing from the whole national discussions. What do you do when you have a twelve-year-old that's chronically addicted to something that was targeted to them and is illegally purchased? What do we, if that suddenly shuts off, what do we do with children that are chronically addicted?
Looking, looking to go to cigarettes.
Yeah. Hard to follow that topic up, to go back to you for the ed forum that you.
Yeah, it was, it was an interesting, interesting talk about it. The thing that I gathered the most out of it was that the secretary was talking about dereg, deregulizing education at a federal level and putting a lot more control at the state level, but also rewarding schools that do well because they're gonna be more sought after than the schools that don't do so well. So, it, it was interesting. It almost sounded like, you know, school of choice deal was what he was talking about and that he would like to untie the hands of some of the regulations that have to do with being able to hire teachers that are a little bit more proficient at physics and things like that and get more into a, get more competitive so that we could hire them at a higher rate. Because, let's face it, if you're a physics teacher that goes to school for six years, you're probably not gonna come out to a starting salary and be interested in being a teacher at thirty-two thousand dollars. So, things like that. But it was definitely very interesting, and it was a lot of, I thought it spoke more to a lot more of the inner-city schools and things like that than, than us. But it, it did have some, some good qualities to it that I liked and I thought it was well attended for what it was.
That's great. It's great to have you represent the board and bring that back to us. So, appreciate it. Did you, did you cover everything you wanted in your update?
I did. Yes, thank you.
All right. Thanks, both of you, for attending and sharing that. Next item is policy second reading. So, can I get a motion to?
Quick question first.
Sure.
There was one, I didn't see on the agenda. There was the rescission of JICDAA employee stewardship.
So, when you rescind a policy, you don't have to run that through the process. So, once you rescind it, it's gone.
So, that's, we don't have to.
You don't have to take a second action. Good question.
Anything else?
No.
Appreciate it. Come up with another one fired out there. So, I'm looking for a motion to accept the second reading. So, to do this properly, we should probably read all of them, the motion, and if somebody can give a second?
I'll make the motion.
Go for it.
To approve the second reading of the following policy revisions. BDDE, Rules of Order. DAF, Administration of Federal Grant Funds. GBCB, Staff Conduct. GBEA, Staff Ethics. GBAEB, Mandatory Code of Conduct Reporting All Employees. JFABD, Education of Homeless Children and Unaccompanied Youth. JIA, Student Due Process. JICD, Student Discipline and Due Process. JIHD, Student Interviews and Interrogations. JLCC, Headlice Pediculosis. JLF, Reporting Child Abuse or Indulgence.
That was last. Yeah. All right. That is, that's quite a motion that you made. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second, Carrie. All right. So, seconded for discussion. Can you, so this is second reading. A lengthy discussion lasts the meeting. Do you want to add any comments or insights into any revisions or changes that brought us to the second reading for tonight?
Well, I think we gave a pretty lengthy recap last week. We had, you know, the first reading at the last meeting followed, that followed the policy meeting on August 28th. I mean, just a couple of highlights at a higher level, New Hampshire Code of Ethics and Code of Conduct for Educators, which just passed late last year, was incorporated into many of these revisions. I think there was a lot more guidance for the resolution and the due process dealing with a variety of issues. And I think, you know, I just read all of the names of those policies. So, a lot more, you know, when the administrators and even if the board at some point has to deal with an issue, I think there's a lot more, you know, guidance for us to, you know, deal with the situation. And there was a twenty-three-page policy providing guidance for the monitoring and management of federal grants. Kelly, I think, had a lot of good insight when we were putting that together. So, thank you for all of your work on that one. But, but I think that's it of us. Anyone has any questions or wants to add anything?
Policy's a big part of what the board is here for, so thanks for the heavy lifting with those. So, it's, motion is seconded. All in favor of accepting the second reading of the said policies? Please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thanks again for all that work. Action items. I'm looking for a motion to approve the proposed Point Five Zero Special Education Teacher at the Sunapee Middle High School.
I will make a motion to approve the proposed halftime special education teacher at S.
Have a second?
I have a second. Carrie's motion.
Thank you. Seconded for discussion. Questions or comments around Brianna M. Connell's new position? Do you want to add any comment or insight?
So, we, uh, special education, we were the beginning and end of last year. We are replacing this person, that person, this has been an open position. It is, it is a real tough market to find people in special education. We can maybe speak a little bit more about pathofessionals and that's a full personnel. We were very creative with the people that walked through our door. We were doing some mixing and matching, and we think we have a real good solution to move forward, and this is part of that solution.
That's great. You guys all set? All right. Motion and seconded. All in favor of approving the proposed Point Five Oh Special Education Teacher for the Sunapee Middle High School? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ananmas, thank you. All righty. We are moving on to, need a motion to approve the proposed district extracurricular positions.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed district extracurricular positions.
Thank you, Carrie. Can I second it? All right. Seconded by Andy. Seconded for discussion. So, these are the middle school, girl soccer coach, bass fishing, boy soccer coach, JV boy soccer coach, and nature classroom chaperones, and the winter activities, ski coordinator. Questions or comments around the list as presented? Quiet group tonight. All in favor of approving the proposed district extracurricular positions as presented? Please say aye.
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 All right. Ananmas. All righty. Last one. Looking for a motion to approve the proposed budget timeline for the fiscal year 2020 to 2021.
I make a motion to approve the administrative budget development timeline fiscal year 2020-21.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Carrie, seconds for discussion. It's quite a roster. Any questions or comments from the board around the schedule?
Are we just gonna meet up here in the library again like we did last year for those, for those meetings?
If that worked, if that continues to work with people, yes. And after the first meeting of the ABC committee, we'll go on the rest of those days while we need the full committee in there.
Yeah, I think library is good.
Yep.
Hearing nothing more. All in favor of approving the proposed budget timeline for fiscal year 2020 to 21, twenty, twenty-one? Please say aye.
Aye.
All righty. Information items. Community forum review. Do you want to kick that off, or do you want to kick it off?
Um, I can kick it off. We had a, I thought we had a great crowd. It was well-attended and, and it seemed like most of the, most of the people were interested in the options of C and D, which were moving the elementary school down to the high school and possibly connecting them. And with an auditorium, with a performance op, option, and without a performance option. The feedback that we got from the, the small survey that went out to those people was the same. You know, they're all interested in that option was the, was the main focus. So, the CIP has followed up with that, and we're moving forward. We're trying to come up with the best option.
Yeah. I think it's a good summary. We, the main thing was, you know, we had the initial forum in here. I think we had about sixty people. Pretty lively discussion. Took the ideas, and that came back with the initial concepts. And it was pretty brisk, I thought. Pretty quickly, people were focusing on the new school, new elementary school and the soccer field. So, some good discussion. There's been a lot of work done to get to that point. There's a lot of work since then to, to work to refine it. So, the next forum is on October 30th, so we're hoping, I think there were about a hundred and sixty people. We counted, is about right?
Yep.
I was counting from the other side of the gym. So, hopefully see a lot more than that. But there'll be, the difference with the, coming back to the next forum and why having the, the one that we're referring to go so well was so important is that when we come back, there's consistent voice around those options, which is basically fixing this school, adding the elementary school, and whether or not there's an auditorium, like you said. The difference is, we're gonna have cost estimates, not line item costs, but cost estimates, working with our consultant. So, it'll really start to bring the light.
estimates, working with our consultant. So it'll really start to bring to life. It's great to have the ideas. Glad to see the active forums, lots of activity on the website. It changes the game when taxpayers start to see what this is the potential cost.
Right.
So we'll be coming back to that. So the wild card, if I can speak informally, the, the vexing conundrum within this project is, for the, the CIP, and by extension the community, is if we have, we don't have adequate fields as it is, and we're going to put a school on one of the ones, the biggest and gets used the most, the Fields Subcommittee, or an offshoot of the Subcommittee, is focusing on fields.
Correct.
And you're leading the charge. Is there any minor update?
Sure. So option number one that the Fields Committee would like to see would be to move, move all of our fields, have another soccer combination softball field up back, create a soccer combination baseball field, but extend the baseball field diamond so that it's not interfering with the soccer field, so that they're not. Right now, the soccer field that we have with the softball field, there's always a section of dirt on the, on the soccer field. So fix it, fix it right. Possibly turf, working on an analysis of what the cost difference would be to go from turf to a 10-year analysis of what it costs us to, to maintain our grass fields. And then also have a couple of track running lanes up there with a, a infield practice area for baseball and softball combination. So that, that's option number one. Really going to depend on what the costing comes back from the civil engineer, because a lot of excavation work back there. The benefit is, we don't have to reinvest in some infrastructure, you know, as far as like toiletry, toilets, and, you know, water for the fields, power, all those things. We already have it here. And that would also be, behind the SAU, the idea is to have parking for those events and student parking for the students because we're losing some parking with our option C and D.
Right.
Now, that would be, that's the, what, the Field Subcommittee is their favorite option. But knowing that that may not come to life because of cost, and there's some wetlands that we have to deal with back there, so the, the second option that works the best, and this all hinges also on the veterans field getting updated, and Dewey Field getting updated so it could be used for potentially JV middle school, baseball, softball. So those, those things all kind of, because if you remember, the list from the beginning was quite extensive of what their needs were, trying to pare it down and figure out what, what we really can get away with. So option two would be off-site, possibly one turf soccer field, one, one grass field that up back, still on-site, that is lit with the baseball field combination on it, extending the diamond. One new softball field off-site with some track space. And that's where the, really the cost analysis is going to come in on, is it more cost-effective to have one off-site turf field, or is it more cost-effective to have two off-site grass fields? So we want to look at what those cost analysis are over, over the life cycle of it. So the option three would be, depending on what the costs, I'll come back at, is to look at two grass fields, soccer fields instead of one turf field. The benefit to the one turf field is, is that they can use it in wet weather, early spring. It can be plowed in the spring. They can use it late fall. And we're, and if it's wet and we can't play on our grass field, that gives you opportunity to play regardless of what the weather is.
Right.
So those are the options we're looking at. I'm actually meeting with a member of the Conservation Committee tomorrow morning, Anne Scott Blewett, the Rec Director, and we're going to walk some town land and see if we can't come up with some alternate sites.
Yeah. The Subcommittee's been trying to make sure we fully exhaust exploring options on land that we own. Then is there a chance to partner with the town? And if those two things are fully exhausted, or some combination, do we look at a private land?
Should, should bring up that we, we are looking at the Seven Harst property, which was part of the original Dewey.
Yeah.
Family donation. That, that, years ago, I say years ago, I think it was 2010 it started, they, they do have some initial bore san, bore testing up there done, and some initial plans for combination softball soccer field. And that's about all you could probably fit up there, but pretty extensive site work involved, even though it's open area. So, but, but that's already a, the plans are already there, so it's a viable option to look at. So we're looking at that.
Can I ask you a question? So when we start talking about off-site fields?
Yes.
Have we considered, like, what's the boundary before we're going to be obligated to have to start transporting kids and now having, paying for that cost over the long term? What does that look like year on year?
We are. Exactly. We're trying to find solutions that are very close. So one of the options is, there's some town land right down off of West Court, which is really just a warm-up jog away. It's down a dirt road. It's not, it's not heavily used. So that would be a great option, but we have to look at land. And we have to see what the Conservation Committee says. It may not be usable, you know, maybe an easement on it.
Yeah, we went down the road of trying to squeeze a baseball field and a practice field up on the land we own for the, you know, the infrastructure, bathrooms, transportation is a big one.
Yeah.
Keeping it on campus would just be.
Absolutely.
So that didn't go well with the reality check on the topography, like, you know, 40, 40 or 50 feet, or 60, or something ridiculous that totally impossible to, to do, or irresponsible to pursue too far. So we're trying to still fully exhaust anything that, on our, our land, and then walkable. We don't want to have to build a bath house and everything else, and we don't want to have, so if there's land a couple miles away, that's a, you know, a 50-year commitment to an awful lot of busing.
Busing, yeah.
All that. So it's, there are absolutely no, I don't, I don't mean this with any humor. There are absolutely no easy buttons to trying to figure out, solving the building conundrum because it's going on the one flat field that we have, even though the field has some surface issues. They've been costing us a lot of money the last decade, and we'll get those numbers and share with the public. How to meet the field's needs for the school and not have to commit to infrastructure spend is very challenging. So if there's potential with, you know, your meetings tomorrow, Scott Blewett and, and the Rec Department and the town have been great about it. It's just, this is what it takes to figure this out. But we are, right to your question, really don't want to have to commit to.
Really, really don't want to be too far offsite. You know, that's.
Are you going to be able to get the answers pretty quickly as far as the wetlands and the conservation piece? Because that would narrow the options down.
It's in, it's in the hands of the civil engineers right now. So they have been notified, and they know that that is our first and foremost option. So that's the most important one that we have to rule out. So hopefully we'll know soon.
The civil engineers, are these town civil?
They're the ones that work with Banwell.
Oh, Banwell, okay.
Yep. So they have tasked them to look at it.
Priority.
And, and put a priority on it so that we can say, oh my God, that's not even possible. Or, well, you know, it's worth investigating a little bit more. I'm not convinced still that to the left of our, if we're facing the field when we're walking across the culvert, I'm not convinced that we can't get at least a practice facility off to the left, and maybe some track stuff. But again, there is some wetlands issues back there, and it really depends on if, if we can get around the wetlands or not, how bad they are.
Yeah, I mean, I understand there'd be a lot of excavation costs, but if we do own the land, you know.
That's, that's my point.
We might have to go someplace else and buy the land and that, you know.
Right.
Right. And we also have probably, was it five feet to make up on the, the surface side of the field to get it level with this building? So it'd be really convenient to have a bunch of fill on site. So those, those are on the radar of the engineers as well, is that we'd be able to.
So if we have to blast out back, that's a cut in the fill, you know what I mean? So that's something that definitely, you know, we have to buy the material to bring the field up to the right elevation to match up to the school currently. So it could, it could be a little more feasible when we're done because we're not buying the material, we're using material from site.